Seeing a quorum present, I will call this meeting to order. This is the Library Board of Trustees on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Calling role Agnes Kulabanya, not here, Iris Kislin, NBC.
Here.
Mayor Kramer, Ed Ward.
President.
John Clyde, Tom Lennon.
Here.
Okay, and January Adams, our director, is also here. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. Schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference We will now have nomination and election of officers. We, to explain this, we have three officers, a president, a vice president treasurer, and a secretary. And Ed and Tom, we love you, but neither of you is eligible for an office. This is by state guidelines for libraries.
Probably.
Okay. Are there any nominations for officers?
I nominate Nick for a president.
Okay. Is there a nomination for...
Somebody has to second.
Nominations? I'm not sure whether...
I don't know.
You're a parliamentarian?
I don't think so.
I don't believe the nominations get seconded.
Last year we did.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
I thought we seconded.
However, I see...
Well, you have to ask if there's any other nominations.
Yes, and the person has to accept.
Mayor Kay Hill, I mean Mayor Kramer's...
Are there any other nominations for the office of president? Seeing none, I will close the nomination for president and, as the only nominee, I accept the position, the nomination.
Well, he accepted nomination. So he's on official ballot.
Unopposed.
How you doing, Mayor?
Hello, Mayor.
Hello. I forgot my packet in my car.
Okay. Is there a nomination for secretary? I will nominate Iris Kislin for the office of secretary. Are there any other nominations for the office of secretary? The other office is vice president treasurer. Are there any nominations for the office of vice president treasurer?
Vice president. Vice president?
So you nominate yourself?
Oh, okay.
It's two posts.
Oh, both?
No, it's combined.
Yeah.
Always has been, yeah.
Yeah, okay. NBC, are there any other nominations for vice president treasurer? Seeing none, I will ask, I will ask for a vote by the secretary for the, since all of the candidates are unopposed. Will you vote? Will you cast one vote?
I cast one vote for all nominees.
Nominees are elected. I see no members of the public, so we shall skip the public comment portion and go on to a discussion and approval of minutes. We had minutes of a regular meeting on November 15th, 2017. Is there any discussion on this particular set of minutes, this particular, these minutes?
I review. I just don't have my packet with me today.
Seeing no discussion, is there a motion to accept the minutes dated November 15th, 2017? Is there a... Okay, it's moved and seconded. Those in favor?
No.
Those opposed? This motion passed, and these minutes are accepted. Now, there is also, there are also minutes from a special meeting held Wednesday, January Is there... Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that the minutes or is that the...
Okay. I'm gonna go back a bit. I've failed to ask for acceptance of minutes from a special meeting on December 13th, 2017. Has everybody, does anybody have a question on this?
Pardon? It's going into executive session very quickly.
Does anyone have any comments on the December 13th special meeting? Is there a motion to accept these minutes? NBC?
I was here.
Tom, seconded. Those in favor?
Township guy came in and went over some stuff.
This motion has passed unanimously.
So we do not have a December 27th meeting?
We had one, but we didn't have enough...
We have a one.
Didn't have a form.
Okay. That's why I wondered if we had minutes, yeah.
Next, there are minutes from a special meeting held January 17th, 2018. Has anyone any questions about this meeting? Is there a motion to accept these minutes as issued? NBC?
Yes.
Second? Ed, second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Should be it.
I think we've covered all of the regular, all of the regular and special meeting minutes. So I'd like to go on now to the director's report. January?
If everybody would look at the financial reports and let me know if you have any comments.
Yes. Comment. Hello. I have a question about rental. Is CAM included in that line item?
It's either included in the rent or the real estate taxes. I don't know.
Okay, 'cause, okay.
Usually it's rent plus CAM.
Okay, so it's probably then...
I used to have a business. I used to pay rent plus CAM.
Well, here's what I found, that the rate should have come to $72,000 and you have it at $83,000, so I'm assuming that CAM was in there. I've looked over the finances, and it seems to me that at the rate we're going, we're gonna have a small surplus at the end of the year. There are some things that haven't been paid out yet, some big things like retirement and another payroll tax, but even taking those into account, it seems we will have no problem meeting our commitments this year.
I have one. Expense 918 equipment service. What is that? Just out of curiosity, because right now we're $797 in the hole, and we're at the half-a-year mark.
Oh, that's a one...
Is that like a one-time expense?
That's a one-time expense. It's prepaid.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
Yes, the way people, the way things are billed. Some things are billed every month, some things are not.
Yeah, it's the service contracts on the printers. The security gate.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that's both branches?
Yeah.
I think that's it for the financials.
Yeah, so you...
January, would you like to...
I guess if Tom would give me money.
Oh, forgive me. So you actually are positive on the equipment service, because you got budget $2,200 at Franklin Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So this past month, we had 1,251 people at 91 programs. And the winter reading programs began on January 10th, and it was kicked off, at least the family one, which is really the children's program. They had Frosted Snowman come in. He comes in from Unity Bank, and he's always a big hit. So we hit that. And we're just about ready to start the automatic library card renewals. That means when somebody's library card expires, rather than making, catching the person when they come in and having them renew it, we will automatically renew it for them. We will send them a postcard alerting them that we've done this. The postcard will also have some promotional materials about the library and upcoming programs on it. And we'll know that if the postcard comes back to us, and I did check that out, if the postcard comes back, we'll know that the person has moved, and we can update the records for that. And there's also another, we also run another report, so we can catch people two ways if they've moved. And we're hoping that this will be another way for, to make people aware of the library. And I think it's nice to do this service for people, so they don't have to deal with this when they come in, when they've got an armload of books and find out they have to renew their card.
Expense involves how much is that? Expense.
How much to do it? Um, it was about $500 for the postcards, and there's a monthly fee from the company that does our collection, not collection, yeah, collections, the collections company grant, runs a report, and I think that's about $100 quarterly.
And then postage?
And postage, which was $90. And that was where we'd sent out 600 this time, yeah.
You sent out 600 for $90?
Yeah. Does that sound wrong? Or does that sound too high?
Oh, the postcards.
The postcards.
Postcards. Yeah, I was thinking, that's awful low. That's a steal. 500 for the postcards.
And I'm done.
Okay, I have one question. The teen advisory group, how many people are in that, roughly?
About 12.
Oh, I see, okay, about 12. Thank you. The next item is a president's report. I'd like to make some comments.
Can I make January?
Yeah, sure.
And if this was just, if this information here, if it's on your report, so should I bring this up now? I have some questions.
You bring it up now.
Okay. All right, so forgive me, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the registration, so this is the new people applying for library cards, all right? And I see that in the Franklin Park region where we're going to be making our investment, we're down by 30%, okay? Do we have any rationale for that? Any reason for that? I mean, is it people moving out of the area? Is it a transit area? How can we address that?
Well...
What can we do better to turn that around from a 30% defect to a increase?
That's unusual for the branch. The branch usually shows a positive, and usually the main branch, the main library usually shows a decrease. For whatever reason, this month it switched. I do know from talking to the branch director that there wasn't that much activity during the holidays.
So this is monthly, then?
Yeah, that's only for the same...
Monthly, so then we've had, we've had inclement weather.
Yeah.
So we can attribute it then?
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for, okay? And so that will also come down to when we're looking at the adult and child computer usage, because I see that we're, we're down in those areas as well. People just aren't coming out to utilize the equipment.
Right. That's actually, the computer use is more of a trend, because fewer and fewer people are coming to use our computers. But they do come in with their own laptops and their own devices, and they're using those.
Oh, okay.
We're only counting people that use the computers at the tables.
And forgive me, and these are things that are all probably familiar to you all, but number of holes filled. What are we doing? Someone's requested something that was unavailable, and we're holding for them the next time they come in, or what?
They're, we own a book.
Okay.
They put a hold on it, which means that we pull the book off the shelf and hold it for them, and they come in and get it.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that'd be a good train to capture, how many people come in with their own devices.
Yes.
Because that may help you plan when you design your new building.
We're working on that.
You may not need a lot of computer-type space.
Right.
You may need just the tables with the plug-ins and et cetera.
Yes, good point.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So let's keep that in mind, because...
Agnes, do you have anything to add to, since you're in the Franklin Park area, and the question was for the Franklin Park branch? Anything you could add to...
I was just thinking about that, but maybe the weather is another factor again that has not been allowing people to go out so often.
Okay.
We had those bitter cold days.
Yeah, it was cold the first weekend in January, 'cause we canceled Franklin Finest. We postponed it to the following weekend because of that reason.
Okay.
And snow. We had some snow days.
Do you think that the Steinmark closing has anything to do with traffic at our library branch, which is in the same shopping center?
I don't think it has any effect with that branch, because...
Thank you. I'd like to make a few remarks here. First of all, let's thank our director, January Adams, and her entire staff, and our trustees as we begin a new year. Last year was busy with several special meetings and new situations to explore and deal with. In 2017, we were benefactors of help, helpful cooperation from our township partners across the parking lot. Vincent Dominic, Jason Hyman, and Bob Vornlocker especially have given valuable guidance. Thank you, Mayor Kramer, for greasing the path here. That's important to us. As we look ahead, we will need even greater cooperation from our township council and other township officials. To facilitate this, I now ask Mayor Kramer to include library representation at the periodic meetings that are held jointly by the mayor, council, board of education, et cetera. Additionally, I propose that we ask the township council to designate a liaison to attend our meetings. That's it.
So, one of the reasons why, I mean, that is a position on council, and council members stopped wanting to take that position, because when they came here, they felt in a meeting such as this, they should have given voice without vote. In other words, be able to participate in the meeting, as opposed to be essentially a person of the public, sitting and observing. I think they would be interested in knowing whether this board would give them voice without vote. In other words, they'd sit at the table, make a comment, essentially like I am when Tom is here, can comment all I want, but I don't have a vote. So I would be interested, I would be interested, and they would be interested in the opinion of the board.
I would move to make that so.
Is there a second? Okay. Tom has moved to offer that a council liaison to this, this group would have voice without a vote, but a, but a voice. And NBC has seconded it. Is there any discussion?
You mean to have a person from the, from the township committee to sit, to attend?
Yes.
And would be the same person every month?
Yes.
Otherwise, it's valuable.
Yeah, sure.
Is there any other discussion?
I believe there'd be value to it. I think they'd be better interact us and allow us to work in concert with the township more closely. They'll be able to appraise us and educate us on things that we are unaware of, and it can help us make our decisions as well.
And it would be up to council to pick the person. But I think there might be an advantage if the person we picked had something to do with the youth center, which hopefully will have our northern branch in it. And there could be interaction with that that could help promote that northern branch, or facilitate how it's going to be used.
That would be very advantageous.
Or, or perhaps the first ward councilman, Ted Chase, who would be, the southern branch is going to be in his neck of the woods. So he might want to be involved. So one of those two would be what I would put forward to council, but they would have the decision, so, okay. My comment.
Iris?
But the town, but the person who would be asked has, has a right to refuse, right? I mean, they don't...
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, it's my understanding that there was a liaison at one time.
Yes, there was.
But they chose to discontinue the practice, and I think it's our job to let them know what nice people we all are, and how we'd love to have someone join us, et cetera. Thank you, Mayor, for suggesting the voice without vote. That's something I hadn't considered.
Yes, apart from being nice people, we are all trying to build something for the township. So if they are part of it, they will be, they will enlighten us, as I said, to give us their own opinions, their own ideas as to how and what we should be able to do.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion is passed unanimously.
I shall deliver the message. I shall deliver the message.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Correspondence? We've all been given the, the report from Publishers Weekly. Is there any other correspondence? January, would you like to comment on this article that you gave us?
I included it, because I know there's discussion in various groups that eBooks and other electronic resources are taking over print. And so I thought it was interesting that print sales were up.
Significantly, too, it seems.
I don't know how it is in other age categories, but where I live, which is a 55-plus community, my, the people that I talk to say, I like to hold a book in my hand, you know? So that, that's, you know, I think in, in that age category, that's how it stands.
Yeah, and I think it's also other groups.
Right.
But, because I've had other people say the same thing to me, they like to hold a book.
They like to hold a book.
They like to use the other stuff, too.
Right.
But they also like to hold a book.
I like books.
See yourself.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you travel or whatever, Ben, it has a place, but...
Yeah.
I do have an electronic thing, a Kindle, and what I find is, maybe I'm just not skilled enough with it, but if I want to go back and look at something, who was that character? It's harder to do with a, an electronic device than it is with, when you can just flip back a few pages, so. Yeah. Paper books are still viable. Is there any other correspondence or communication? Seeing none, I'll ask, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Would anyone like to...
Do you have to vote on the dates?
Yeah.
We have to second it.
One, one item of new business is to approve the proposed meeting dates for this year, 2018. We're already here on January 24th, but there's some more. You've all gotten this in the mail. Are there any, is there a motion to accept the schedule?
I second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, moved by Iris, seconded by Ed. Is there any discussion?
That doesn't matter.
Ed or NBC, I think they both...
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, we need buzzers. Who, who pushed the buzzer first?
One comment, I'm just glad your December meeting is before the holidays.
More September.
Because our last meeting was right in the middle of the holiday season.
The 22nd, yeah.
The 27th, so I'm glad this is the 19th, before the holidays, because a lot of people may go away, or be traveling, or...
Obese.
Get caught up an hour and a half away where I live.
Look at that, Dave.
Yeah, I'm glad, that's, that's great.
Any further discussion on this schedule? Is there a motion to approve the schedule for 2018? NBC has made the motion.
Iris, second.
Wait a minute, who's that?
NBC made the motion. Tom has seconded the motion. I'm sorry, Iris, I saw him first. There's lots of enthusiasm here for this, this schedule. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? This passed unanimously. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I would entertain...
No, no, no.
Right. Okay. That's intentional, no meeting in July.
Yes.
Okay.
I, executive session.
You want to put that in executive?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So who?
Both of us. Whichever. That's mine.
Co-motioners, NBC and Iris. Is there a second?
Yes. Got a second by having a...
Right, no, it's enough.
We are entering executive session to discuss a property negotiation, so.
Five fifty, seven fifty.
I know that's right.
Okay.
Five five nine is what I have on the...
That's right.
Five five nine is correct.
5:59 is correct.
What do we need? A motion to come out of?
Motion's come out of executive.
Is there a motion to exit executive session?
I saw move.
Second.
Iris, NBC. Those... Any discussion? Seeing none? Is there a vote in favor of going out of executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This is unanimous to leave executive session. Okay. I would like to go back to new business for the purpose of talking about our lease for the Franklin Park branch. Our lease... We have a two-year extension on our old lease, which will expire the end of October of this year. We've been offered a new two-year extension with an increase of approximately 2%. And I'm proposing that we accept this, and hopefully, by the time this new two-year extension is up, we'll have our new building ready to move into. Is there a motion to accept the amended lease?
Yeah, so move.
Tom? Agnes?
We passed it.
I was looking the other way, NBC. I know your hands have been way...
No, no, I passed it.
Any discussion on this lease extension? Those in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? This one has passed unanimously. I'm on the wrong page, okay. Our next meeting date is February 28th.
Yes.
As we have approved that schedule. Is there any other comment by any other trustees? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Ed?
Right.
Agnes? Any discussion? For those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Babe, I have a day. I'm gonna sit out of here.
6:20. You said 6:20.
Wow!
You said 6:20.
Is this room good or what?
Enough time to get across the...
Well, I had a question, babe.
We have a curriculum committee meeting for the Board of Education. And I'm presenting our...